No problem. Hi, everyone. My name is Mike Bishop.
Now.
Okay.
Hi, everyone. My name is Mike Bishop and I am the Chair of the Harwood Union. Sorry, the Harwood Unified Union School District. This is the Finance Committee and we are meeting on when? On Monday, July 1st, 2024 at about 10:05. We will now all go around and say who's at the meeting. Again, my name is Mike Bishop. I'm the Chair of the Finance Committee and I represent the town of Faceton.
Okay, I'm Steve Rosenberg, representing Moretown.
Bobby Rude, representing Waitsfield.
Dan Rosioli, representing Waterbury.
Ashley Woods is here.
Finance for the school district.
Okay, great. And I think Cindy Sennin, who is the Vice Chair of the the regular school board or the big school board, is also listening in as well. Okay, we will go ahead and approve the agenda. I was going to make an amendment to the agenda, but I think what I need to talk about can fall under the next steps. And so we'll just stick with that. We'll stick with the agenda as far as what I needed to talk about, which is, which is really related to the next steps.
Yeah.
So do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Okay, Steve, second, Bobby. Any discussion?
I'll second that.
Okay, or Dan, whoever.
Okay.
All, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? We will now approve the minutes from the June 24th Finance Committee meeting. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
I move to approve, Bobby.
Okay, Bobby, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Steve, any discussion? Okay, I'm hearing none. All in favor? Bye.
Bye.
Any opposed? Okay. Already went around and said who's here. I don't see anybody else on. We will now have public comment. Don't see anybody on here for public comment. Is there anybody in the room with you, Lisa? I don't see anybody.
No, no one's in here.
Okay, we'll give it another second here. We can always come back to it if if somebody comes in and wants to make a statement. Okay. So the first item on the agenda, really the only item, again, I'll, we'll get to next steps afterwards, is kind of deciding which scenario we want to look at as far as, and again, just to recap, there's the shorter term goals and then the longer term, term goals. And as part of our longer term look, we were looking at facilities and possible consolidation and what that would look like. At previous meetings, we've discussed a couple of different, a couple of different times, we've discussed the topic and we all reported back different scenarios and we are going to narrow it down to a couple of different ones to kind of look at and take a look at what it would, what it would, or what that, what those scenarios would, would look like in, in actual, real life. So Dan, this is something I know you really care about. Did you want to add anything to, to this?
Sure. So the piece that I would like to suggest is that we take Scenario 2 under consideration for a deeper dive and consider fast-tracking Scenario 2 for the fall of 2025 and then look at some of the other ideas as possible long-term solutions for further savings. So not necessarily mutually exclusive, but we could potentially do one first and then another step or a larger step later on.
Dan, do you want to just recap what Scenario 2 is again?
Yep. Scenario 2 is switching all of the elementary schools to PK to 4th grade. We would close Faceton and Harwood Middle School. The Harwood High School would go to 8th grade to 12th grade. Crossit Brook would be all towns 5th through 7th grade. And then we move the central office and potentially HCLC into the middle, the Harwood Middle School space.
Okay, I'm just, what I'm going to do, just to make it easier, I'm just going to go around and call out everybody's names. There's not that many people on here, so everyone can kind of get a chance to give their thoughts about it. Steve, did you have thoughts? I see you have your mouth full though.
No, no, I eat quickly. I'm good. I think Scenario 2 has got a lot going for it. You know, it's based on finances and, you know, there's a lot of controversy about, you know, should a high school be 8 to 12 or 9 to 12? And should middle schools be 5 to 7 or 5 to 8? So we're going to get some pushback on that, but I don't think that should stop us. And again, we'll get a lot of pushback on closing Faceton. I think combining the middle schools is a great idea and then moving the central office and HCLC is also a very good idea. So I'm, I'm happy to look at this.
Okay. Bobby?
Okay, I had a bunch of notes and then just panicked because I couldn't find them, but I have them here. You know, it was interesting, as I got more familiar with the charts and looking at trying to balance out the capacities, I actually found myself drawn to seven. There was, there were a couple of different proposals to close Brookside and initially I thought that was not a good idea. But then I started, you know, and I think that that idea was going to make Crossit Brook more of a, that would make it the, a big elementary school. And then it started to appeal to me because I thought, well, it has room for growth, a little bit of room for growth, but it does fill the building. And then I'm trying to think, I had made pros and cons. So anyway, I started thinking, well, maybe that would be a more radical scenario to look at. And I'm just trying to, you know, I think the closing of Faceton is probably not that controversial. I think it's come up before. And if they were merged with Warren or Waitsfield, I mean, I, I think parents would have to be given the option to go to the closest school based on the agreement, the terms of the agreement. So my only, you know, and my other concern was the grade configuration for the middle school and what makes the most amount of sense. And the grade configuration seems to be working. Oh, the grade configuration seems to be working well at Cross, at Crossit Brook, but I think more to the point is the relationships that kill kids build. Oh, that was where I had with Scenario 6, I was worried because grades 5 and 6 would go to Harwood. And I think that that's, well, but then, you know, if you do a 5 through 8 middle school, then that's not such a, a big issue. But, you know, some configuration, I mean, filling the Harwood building, I think is important. And, and the high school is only, as I read, we're at, what, 57% occupancy? Let me just see, I have these. Faceton is at 57%, Crossit Brook is at 67%, Warren is at 57%. Harwood Middle School is 75% fall, but the high school, what is the high school? I don't, I don't see that.
57%.
67, 57% is the high school?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I kept going back and forth, but I can see, you know, pros and cons. So let's see. The cons that I had for Scenario 2 were it makes Crossit Brook all towns. Is that correct?
Hmm.
Yeah, so I, I think there would be pushback sending the elementary kids from the valley to Crossit Brook, to Duxbury. I think there would be pushback on that. I think parents were concerned about the bus ride. I don't know what the bus ride is for kids coming from Waterbury Center. And where, where they, where they're nearest, but it would leave Brookside open, right? Oh, no, all elementary, huh?
Sorry, Bobby, I was getting confused. Are you talking about Scenario 2 now or 7?
Scenario 2.
Okay, yeah, Scenario 2 leaves Brookside open and Crossit wouldn't start till 5th grade.
Right, but, but Warren and Waitsfield would go to Crossit Elementary?
No, in Scenario.
5 and 6.
Yeah, Brookside, Moretown, Waitsfield and Warren are all PK to 4.
Oh, okay. And so 5 and 6 then goes to Crossit, which is ironic because that was the original issue. I sort of like having the middle school in the Harwood building. I don't know why I'm getting so mixed up with all of these.
There's a lot of scenarios that, and we can come back to it.
So I would be concerned about moving the middle school, going, revisiting Crossit Brook as the middle school. And so that was my, you know, only because I know that that had been a challenge in the past. And I like the idea of the middle school actually being kind of in the center of the towns and Harwood, that's why that selection was chosen initially. Because it's, it's more or less centralized. It makes it kind of even. I think what I'm looking at is wanting, wanting all middle school to be at, at Harwood building. So anyway, that's, but you know, looking at some of these, I wondered, you know, can you mix and match? I mean, move, you know, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I'm going to give you my thoughts here in a second. I just wanted to go around the room real quick. I see Ashley, did you want to say something or is that an accident? You have your hand up?
No, it's not an accident.
Okay.
I was curious what Dan meant about when you said fast-tracking for 2025.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna get to that in a second. Yeah.
Okay, because that is terrifying and I think the word fast-tracking, maybe we just, you know. Sorry, go ahead. And then just, I'll just make a couple of comments.
Yep.
You know, it has been brought to our attention. I'm not sure how much you guys have heard it, that HCLC students and teachers are not really super thrilled at the idea of being rolled into Harwood. They're a little scared about that. There was a discussion had where they, you know, what we perceive as them feeling separate is actually good in some ways for these students because of their special, their challenges. So that's one thing. When you say fast-tracking and Faceton School in the same scenario, I think that's, that is, I'm not saying that I am opposed to closing a school or I'm saying there's never going to be that. I'm just saying, I think that, I think it is beneficial to look at scenarios, but I also think the dissection of just school by school, the cost of what travels with students and the cost of what the building savings would be, I think that analysis is really important. And if we could get some of those from Lisa or from the, the crew when they, you know, obviously when there's more people back in the office, I think that's better. I think that's some of important information. And I just want to also say that I think the most massive pushback would be trying to flow only 7th, 7th and 8th grade at Crossit. I think that would be really a tough sell. That's it from me.
Okay, so.
Actually, could, could I just say my, so what I did was I gave Scenario 3 actually a B+, but then I see, I ended up thinking I liked Scenario 6 and Scenario 4. So I'll just say that.
Okay. So, so my thoughts on this has actually changed a little bit from now that we're really diving in and, and talking and I would say, I'm going to jump around a little bit, but my thought is about Scenario 2 is, I think it would be a, I, I don't believe that in the programming for middle school, just having 8th grade at Harwood would, would, would work out. I think that, I believe there's a curriculum base and you have to have a licensure and some licensing that goes along with that, and I'll get into that in a second. So it kind of has to travel with the middle schoolers. And I know there's some like writers, if you're licensed to teach high school, that, that, there's different writers you have with the grades. I, I know that, I know enough about it to know that that's the case. So if we're going to do, so, so what I'm trying to get at is a scenario that I can get behind to look at for further investigation would be to moving the Harwood Middle School to Crossit Brook. So all middle schoolers from 5 through 8 in, in the district would, would go to Crossit Brook. I'm, I'm fine looking at that. I just want to say though, that Harwood Middle School is an amazing school. I, I see it firsthand every day with my stepdaughter. The staff is amazing. And I know that there would definitely be some, some, I don't, I don't know, I don't expect there to be a lot of pushback. I think there'd be questions and concerns. But when you look at all the different scenarios, this is probably the lowest risk to me. At least on paper, thinking about it, that would be able to consolidate at least one school. We heard from one of the principals the other day, Dwayne, who said that he would rather have middle school, all the middle school kids in, in one roof. And, and so I, I think that's a really lesser of all the evils that we're talking about right now is looking at what consolidation would look like to move all of the 5 through 8 students to Crossit Brook. So that is something that I could definitely get behind, as well as moving the central offices, when the time is right, back into one of the schools. The other reason I like moving the middle school from Harwood to Crossit Brook is if we were moving forward with a bond, perhaps maybe part of the school would be, and I hate to use the term abandoned, but perhaps maybe we wouldn't need to put as much money into the school if we're not using a lot of it at, at, at Harwood. So, so I'm definitely interested in that. As far as looking at any elementary consolidation, I, I think that we're, we will all probably sit here. And if we were talking about Warren, closing, consolidating Warren into another school or consolidating Faceton as we are, or, or Steve lives in Moretown, I think that it's, we're all, all of us would probably sit here and unless it was some amazing deal and probably vote against it. Because I think it's tough when you're choosing one town to consolidate. And if you look at the numbers, for me, originally I had put forward that I thought we should look at kind of consolidation and beefing up the Waitsfield, the current Waitsfield School, but I was looking at the numbers. And although, yeah, it'll be on the sewer system soon, it's already at 90 something percent capacity, which I thought, which I was, after I looked at those numbers again, I was like, I don't think that's going to work when Warren, I was just over the other day out on the courts and, I mean, it's a great campus. And it's got a lot going for it and it's got a capacity. And so I'm not sure if, if a second scenario or another kind of hybrid scenario would be that we look at consolidation of, you know, Waitsfield, Warren and, and Faceton perhaps, and, and look at the Warren location because it's got such great, you know, it's got capacity and it's a great spot and, and, and whatnot. So long way around to say right now, I would definitely support having our staff and, and asking Lisa or whoever we decide we should ask, or she can point us in the right direction, to look at what it would look like if we consolidated Harwood Middle School into Crossit Brook. And then final thing is about the fast-track. Yeah, I think that's great, Dan. You're excited about it. We still have time. Perhaps maybe it would happen for 2025, start of the school year. But I, I think it's going to have to be a little bit more thoughtful and there's got to be a little bit more steps in it. I could be wrong on just one vote, but I think that it's going to take a little bit of time to, to look at any sort of consolidation. I would just say that I think consolidated Harwood Middle into Crossit Brook would definitely be easier to do than, than a complete closure of a, of a local town school. So anyway, I'm going to stop talking. I'm going to go around the room again. I see a lot of people have their hands up. Steve, go ahead.
Well, I think I was the last person to have my hand up, so someone else should go first.
Has everybody gone around?
Yes, okay, then I'll circle back around to Ashley.
I'm good. Carry on.
Okay, Dan?
Okay. Staying on the Scenario 2 discussion, right now anyway, one of the advantages I saw to this was that it appears to me anyway, that we wouldn't need to make a large investment in any infrastructure to make it happen. If we move 8th grade to Crossit as well, then I think we're starting looking at some of the bond issues that came up before with possible expansions across it. Which adds a certain level of complexity to the whole process, which may not, may it's not a good option, but it is one thing to consider if we're having to invest a lot of money right now in the school expansion when our core problem is that we have too much capacity.
Yeah.
Okay, Steve, go ahead.
Yeah, and I, I appreciate that point Dan made. But I'm a little worried. It seems that Mike brought up that a high, that a middle school should include 8th grade. So could Crossit Brook, could we change that to 6 to 8? And have the schools be PK to 5, the elementary schools?
Yep. That's, that's not a bad idea. I, I know that is, again, we want to do research and talk to the right people, but a lot of elementary schools are K through 5 and then you go 6, 7 and 8 to a middle school.
Yeah.
Yeah. It could be. Hang on here. I think Ashley, did you have your hand up again? Ashley, you're playing games.
I didn't put it down, but I will answer that with just one question is that, I'll take that hand down, was that the, the one area where you're going to meet a problem there is Brookside, because it is bursting at the seams and we, you know, I don't think you could push 5th grade back into Brookside. You could probably do that in other places, but I don't know about Brook and that's a big school. So that, that would be an issue.
Dan, with all your numbers, what does the enrollment look like in the future? I don't, I, unfortunately, I can't toggle back when I'm on the Zoom thing, but what, what does it look like as far as at Crossit, like, and then you have like the next enrollment numbers? Yours?
Yeah, I mean, the, the NASDAQ projections show the district as a whole slowly declining over the next 10 years. Slowly but significantly. And I think maybe some of those projections have been stalled because of COVID issues, families moving into Vermont and whatnot, which is kept their numbers up for the last few years. But as far as the last report that I saw, they're still expecting a drop.
That's correct. I just wanted to say that's correct, Dan. It's, they had anticipated us over the last couple of years dropping more than anticipated, but we're, we've kind of been on a stay-steady rate over the last couple of years due to COVID and people moving into the area. So we're not dropping as much as they predicted. So that is correct.
Does, it, it sounds like to me that, I'm just going to kind of throw this out here really quickly, that it sounds like there's some interest in looking at the consolidation of the two middle schools. Is that what I'm hearing now? What it looks like, we don't know yet, but it sounds like there's a trust in looking. Is that, everyone agrees with that? Yes?
Yes.
Okay, so how do we, so let's just start with that for a little bit. So how do we as a group want to start? Do we, and Lisa, I'm going to ask you because you're the staff rep right now, but if it's not you, that's fine. Just tell us who we need to contact or whatever. But do we all agree we want to start the process to look at that? Who would we, what would be our first step, Lisa? Who do, who should we talk, talk to about that?
In terms of consolidating the two schools?
Yeah, like we said, if we said to you or Dr. Mike, like, okay, we're interested in what it would look like to consolidate the two middle schools, what does that mean for staffing? Is there any potential savings logistics-wise? It doesn't have to be an in-depth summary, but just some logistics, like a sniff test.
Yes, we would have to get it together with our administrative team, look at that, look at transportation, look at the infrastructure of the two schools, what could be shifted. And, you know, I would, even, even in these discussions, I actually would like to include Ray Dagel, Director of Facilities, and talking about, you know, when we're looking at consolidating or transfer or combining, you know, what schools would need, what, and what infrastructure would need to be addressed. And just a quick question, I just, because some of these, these numbers seem, these estimates seem to be a little low. So I was just curious, Dan, on where you got the, like, the square footage number?
Yeah, I just took data off the AOE dashboard. So these are forward-looking projections. They're just a snapshot of this year according to AOE.
Okay, I, I'm just looking even, you know, the $300 per square foot for a new school and that seems low right now with.
Oh, for the, yeah, for the financials, I mean, I put right on there that these are real guesses.
Okay, because they're, yeah, okay.
I took, the $300 a square foot came out of a handwritten handbook, you know, that's just probably outdated and there's a lot of stuff that I'm not qualified to speak with, but I was just trying to get some kind of structure going with that.
I, I think things that we would, you know, obviously want to look at too is, you know, are the staff at the middle school also teaching classes at, in the high school section, right? So, you know, how would that translate into any potential savings to, you know, consolidate the middle school, right? So if, if there's a foreign language teacher teaching middle school kids and also teaching high school kids, does that, does that mean, you know, can the foreign language teacher at Crossit Brook also teach these other kids, right? So those are types of things that we would want to look at. And, well, I think you get, I think you get it, what, the, the kinds of stuff we would need to look at. So as far as I'm concerned, I don't know, the rest of the members want to, or Bobby, you have your hand up. Go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, talking about two things. I mean, we do have cost estimates from the bond group that was looking at Harwood. So we know that the square footage is higher, but we could probably get an estimate from that. The other thing is that, you know, I'm not 100% comfortable with saying, you know, I think I'm, I'm really on board with the middle school being in one building. I think all of the questions that you're raising make you wonder, you know, which would be the building and where would it be and, and but if we don't have to, if we don't have the burden of moving HCLC back into the building, then that opens up, you know, that's, and considering other options. I, I'm just a little, you know, but I, but, you know, I think the idea of consolidating and bringing the middle school together, it's, it's a little ironic at this point, but, you know, but a good one. And speaking of, you know, other things we haven't looked at is class sizes. Can we get savings there? And that's what a lot of schools, if you read the article that Mike sent out, that was from the Wall Street Journal and also the New York Times, I mean, that's what's happening. So we have to look at, so I don't know how we factor, it, it just gets mind-boggling. And maybe Lisa would have some suggestions about how we approach this, but I, I like the idea of, you know, okay, we're talking about the middle school, let's consolidate that and then, and maybe talking to Ray initially about where, you know, where he sees, I mean, we also have transportation issues and there would be change in administration if all the middle school is in one school.
Well, I think, and I see Ashley and Dan both have their hands up, but I want to say that we're, we're, right now, we're just looking at seeing if we have a consensus to start a look at what it would take to combine the middle schools into one building. That's all we're talking about right this second as far as the scenario. But all, everything you said, Bobby, is, is right. Dan, go ahead and then Ashley.
You're muted.
Thank you. The piece that would be helpful from admin from my perspective is is a reality check on the AOE capacity numbers, because I know that that is just a calculation based on building square footage. And probably a more important thing might be the number of classrooms, which is listed in parentheses next to the school names on that sheet. You know, so when you look at Crossit Brook, for example, it has a higher theoretical capacity, but fewer classrooms than Brookside. And so part of that is age-related. Part of that is how the Part of that is how the buildings are set up, for sure. But if admin could maybe give us some insights on what's more important aspects of capacity are, rather than just stock numbers that are calculated on square footage, that might be helpful.
Okay, Ashley.
I think it would be beneficial, basic on what Dan is saying, to maybe talk to Dwayne, because he is the knower of all things middle school in terms of, like, those class size questions. We talked at the retreat a little bit about that there are some efficiencies and inefficiencies by having teachers that teach high school students and middle schoolers, remember, he mentioned that that can mean that this middle school plays second fiddle to the high school's needs because of priority. But he also, but those jobs, those by the hours FTE kind of jobs, right now, bridge two things. And I do think that, I like what you're trying to do here, Mike, in that you're just trying to narrow down, let's pick a scenario and freaking work on it. I get that, and I think that's, this is the one to look at, because it's been so contentious, and it's very much a, a question for all of us. But Bobby raises some really solid points about where is it? You know, where is that consolidation happening, and what is our capacity at Harwood? So, I think that, I think that getting information from admin, and I want to give them some leeway, because it is summer, and even though the crazy members of this committee chose to meet all summer long, there are people with little tiny lives who want to go and go camping and do whatever, so without pressing them too hard, I think it would be really great to nominate a secretary in this group who is going to just keep writing down the pieces of information that you want. Keep gathering that information so that you can give it to Lisa, and then Lisa can get it for, or you can give it to Dwayne, you know, there's some componentry there that you need the data. And, you know, square footage of Harwood, I think is 192,000 square feet, I don't know what they said to you. I swear to God, I stand by that, there's some space to be had in there, here and there for other things, so. Anyway, I, I, I like the idea of, of, what he's, what am I saying, of, of exploring this, I just think you got to keep it very you got to section it off into, how do we, how could we do it with class size, how could we do it with building? How, what are the grades that need to be in it? There's a lot of pieces to analyze just this one thing.
So, I'm just gonna say something real quick, and then I see Cindy has her hand up. Maybe we even scale it back a little bit more at first. And we just ask for, you know, and I'm not sure what the right term is, a casual email from a handful of people, some, some stakeholders. So for instance, maybe we ask for one from Dr. Mike, maybe we ask for one from Dwayne, maybe one of the you know, I'm trying to think of, of somebody, but of, of other people, maybe like there's four or five people, we just ask for, hey, you know, one of the aspects we're looking for is, is consolidating the two middle schools, what are your initial thoughts? It doesn't have to be, I, I don't, I'm not looking for a dissertation, but maybe somebody would just, you know, some casual thoughts, because maybe there's a deal breaker on here, we're not even thinking about that, somebody who does the work every day could, could, could say, Lisa, or, or, Cindy, hang on one second, I haven't forgotten about you, Lisa, go ahead.
I, I'm just putting, I, I can't hit the hand button, I apologize.
Okay.
So, I just, curious, what I'd like to actually do is almost create a think tank with the administrators to get them together, and to be able to put, you know, when I have the right people in the room, be able to discuss class sizes, options, consolidation, bring in transportation. I am meeting with Dan Sargent for a school in two weeks to go over some things I met with him about two weeks ago, to be able to see where we can have cost savings on transportation. But I also brought up the fact that, you know, there might be consolidation in the future, and how would that look, and how could we have cost savings? I would actually like to see if I could get the administrators together over the summer at some point to be able to bring all this together, to then be able to roll out to the finance committee and say, here are some of the discussions that we had, what's possible, what's not possible. And then be able to, you know, create that and start pulling that in mold into different scenarios and possible phases of those scenarios. But I think having the right people in the room to be able to say, well, that won't work because they don't have the right licensure, or, or, you know, this is how it works.
Yeah, and, and remember, we did ask that human resources person several months ago during the budget season to put a put together a list of who can teach what, I don't know if that ever was accomplished, but
Yep, it was.
Yeah, so it should be hopefully pretty easy. And again, I think to Ashley's point, it is the summertime. And I know if you have a mindset, you're gonna be off for a month or, or whatever it is, that you get emails saying, oh yeah, by the way, hope you're enjoying your vacation, but we're also thinking about consolidation of your employer, or whatever. You know, I don't want to rattle any, you know, I don't want to stress people out, but if you, if you, if it's normal to do this sort of stuff, and it's not unusual to email an administrator or somebody off, off-season or whatever in the summer, then that's probably fine, but anyway, let me get Cindy, Cindy, you haven't said anything, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
First off, I, when I came on board, I came, I'm on the board in part because I always had thought that we should have one middle school. That was one of my big things that I thought was important. Since then, I had come to appreciate the advantages of the two middle schools, actually. And the others, so I see one of the big issues that we, we will contain, contend with, whatever you, you know, we all decide to do, is the issue of one middle school, consolidating the middle schools, and which grades we do will contribute to some of that discussion, and how much construction at Crossit Brook that requires also will contribute to that. And the other big thing you have to contend with is the issue of closing Facetown or not, as it being the smallest of the, of the primary schools. And so, actually, that's what I was, you know, I, I sort of went on that then, when I submitted my idea, but anyway, that's all, I just think that we have two potential big issues that we have to figure out how we address that they make sense for this
Yep.
one middle school, or closing Facetown, or both, whatever.
Yep, okay. So, just, I want to make sure we leave a little bit of time at the end of the meeting for, for the other agenda item, but so is the group feeling okay with Lisa doing some light outreach? And about consolidating of the middle schools to stake, the stakeholders she mentioned, and reporting back and collecting that data, or maybe we get individual emails by a certain date, whatever it is. How do people feel about that? I see Bobby, your hand is up, do you want to go ahead first?
You're muted. You're mute.
Uh, no, and, you know, and I was wondering to that point, you know, maybe just asking people to jot down some, some thoughts they've had, I mean, they, they, some of these people have been around with this issue before. So it might be something without having to have people physically meet during a vacation period, you know, that, that maybe just emailing ideas, yeah.
And we had, we had data before, there's been several people in the community that have written to us saying that they have information about what it was gonna look like to consolidate, I, I will say that I'm not as concerned about major issues with it, because I know Dr. Mike actually put it out to us a while ago, with the previous board chair, we talked about saying, is this something we want to look into, and I didn't hear any major concerns when there was initial talk about consolidating of the middle schools. Where I figured that there might be, if, if there were big concerns, that would have been brought up. So anyway, Steve, and then Ashley.
Yeah, I, I certainly like the idea of Lisa meeting with her group and seeing what costing out consolidating the middle schools would look like, but I, I think it's also a good opportunity to kind of go for all scenario to, to ask the administration to price out closing Facetown, and also moving central office and the learning center. I, I think our attitude should kind of be, at the moment, we're just looking at the numbers. And, you know, we really, I, I mean, word is gonna get out, of course, and people are gonna flip out, they're gonna close Facetown, they're gonna move Learning Center, we just have to say, we're just looking at the numbers, we're just looking at the numbers. So, I, I would appreciate seeing all those figures.
Okay, Ashley.
Yeah, I just want to say that I agree with Steve, there's, all the numbers matter and all the scenarios, I mean, this conversation we're having hurts people's feelings. There's nothing we can do about it, just saying it hurts, that's, that's our job. But I do want to say that I think Lisa will get some decent buy-in from those admin. People, I know that they want to have a voice in this discussion, and they have a lot to say. So I'm not sure about the timing, and I think that you guys need to be a little more flexible with the next six weeks than you maybe want to be. But I think it's not beyond, I think she can certainly reach out and, and say what we're trying to do. You know, we need to get the true information, we cannot bobble around with scenarios that are, you know, maybes, or that are not quite what they really are, and getting your, the people doing the work and getting the real math done is important. So I, I fully support the next phase being some kind of think tank where we get input from those who may have Game Stoppers, or may have other, you know, well, we could do this, what about this, you know, there's, that, this all okay, so maybe every board member here comes up with somebody who they think, or maybe there's a list that Lisa has that would be good people to ask beyond the admin. To Bobby's point, a lot of people have been involved, I'm not so sure the data from the would-be bond of 2020 is really worth our time, it's a whole new world. Yep, that was a huge addition, that was a lot of stuff, I think maybe, you know, fresher data is more relevant.
Yeah, I, I just want to reiterate, this is a long-term conversation anyway, so this isn't something where we need the information back next week. And I, I, with that said though, I also do want to sense benchmarks that, you know, I don't want this to be like, yeah, just get back to us in the fall sometime, Lisa. But I think that, you know, unlike our shorter-term goals, which we're gonna talk about in a minute, for, for the budget, this is more of a longer-term conversation, so I don't expect you to send out an email blast tomorrow, Lisa, to have information back to us by next week or whatever. I think, I think this is something that we're on doing. I, I, I would say, we're trying to narrow down a scenario. I think that if our goal is to look at consolidation, I am not, I'm willing to look at any scenario. I'm willing to look at, I'm willing to look at any scenario, but I'm going to personally have a hard time looking at any scenario that only consolidates one of the smaller elementary schools. And, and with that said though, I think that when you start saying, okay, well, fine, we won't just look at Facetown, we'll look at what it would look like for Warren and Waitsfield and Moretown, that's fine, I, I just think that adds more time to it, and it's more research, and if we, and it's just another, another time period that goes by, so I, I think that if we're looking at consolidation seriously, then choosing one scenario that's probably, potentially, again, they don't know, the least impactful, I think it would be that. We're looking at consolidating the middle schools, and that's why I was kind of just focusing on that right now, and then see where it goes towards the elementary schools. I just think we're taking on too much if we start looking at, you know, well, look at the numbers for this and that and everything, I think it's something we could ask for, but that's just my, that's just, I'm only one vote, it's just my one, my opinion, so.
I think you're right, Mike, that the first scenario is this, this is it, we keep talking about it, let's do it, and into Steve's point that we want to look at all numbers, we do, but that's a lot of work and it'll take time, so the first piece is this, I think you're right.
So, okay, so, yeah, go ahead, Steve.
No, I'm happy with that.
Okay. And, and, and I just want to clarify, unless I'm mistaken, you know, the central office piece, I, we can, I talked to Lisa the other day about, I know I can't remember what she told me, that will be another time you want to talk about that, Lisa, is that right?
Year away, because of the lease, right?
Yeah.
We have another lease, another year in the lease, and then we're, we're, we're looking at relocating.
Okay, perfect, so that, so that's kind of a done deal, I mean, I don't want to say done deal, but as far as the future, we know that most of, I guess all the stops, there'll be changes to where the central office is located in the future.
Yes.
Okay, alright.
But that may not be HCLC, so that also could, that idea might not fly either, so those two are less priority.
Right, yeah, well, and it could be part of this scenario, we're looking consolidating in the middle schools, that would certainly free up a lot of space, and you know, that's a consideration, you know, as part of this deal, is in the future, that, that would save, save some money there, so.
So, one of the things, when I have get the administrators together, some of the things that I want to be able to gather is the data so I can share with you. One of the things, just really quick, Mike, you just had mentioned before that, you know, possibly expanding Warren. Warren is the only school where we don't own the land, and an expansion of Warren most likely is not possible. So these are the types of information that I want to pull together, get all my administrators in the room, get the data, and then share that data with you in terms of looking at class sizes, looking, sharing what land we own, where is, where we can expand, what schools could move, how many students can move to what school? So getting all that together and thinking outside the box with all the administrators, and coming up with some datas, or this is not an option, this can't happen, or have we thought about this, so.
Yep, I think that's, that's where we're going, but I think even narrowing it down for right now, kind of like the first part of that is just looking at the middle schools. And then that's the second part of it, so I think what you're talking about is, like, maybe long, long-term, but the shorter long-term might be the two middle schools, does that make sense?
Well, I think we need to have a master plan, and then build on that master plan, because you don't want to, you know, do a phase and then change the approach, so having a master plan and then phase it in, but I think we need to look at everything. And be able to say, you know, we looked at everything, we're looking at all the numbers, we're putting the pieces of the puzzle together. Here's our master plan, and here's how we're gonna phase in that master plan over the next X amount of years, having a master plan for cost savings and efficiency over X amount of years is a better way and approach to be able to then put the pieces into the puzzle to make the whole.
I'm gonna, I'll be then Dan, and then we'll wrap it up, just because I, we want to, before the meeting ends, we just want to talk about something else real quick, so Bobby, go ahead.
Well, I just, along with knowing what land is, belongs with schools, also do we we own all the buildings, that came up, you know, I don't know if there are special problems with particular buildings, closing them, not using them as schools, I mean, I keep hearing things, so. And then, I'm particularly interested in that grade configuration, if we are talking about the middle school, do the middle school administrators have an ideal, do they think that would be good? It didn't sound so much like Dwayne did, but maybe he has other ideas, anyway. That's it.
Okay, Dan?
Okay, yeah, Lisa verbalized what I was trying to say at the beginning, much better than I did. But I second that, a master plan will be critical for this. In part because if we want to go to the community and say, look, we want a five, 10, $50 million bond, or whatever it is, because of this phase that we think is important, then it definitely really needs to be part of a plan that has broken it down into, alright, these are some things that we're doing to save money short-term, this is what we're gonna do to save money long-term. And piecing it all together as a puzzle, as Lisa said, rather than just having at least the appearance of of being a less organized plan, or not having a, a long-term plan. That's, I just wanted to back that up, what Lisa was saying.
Yep, okay, and, yeah, I, I think that's all good, and I think, Lisa, you have the idea, so any other thoughts on this before we close out this topic? So Lisa, you're gonna, again, no timeline, I suppose, on this one. I guess, just as far as future agenda planning, when would you expect that we should talk about this again, or would you have something, and again, there's no time limit, there's no timeframe per se, but you know, should we think about, will you have something back to us by mid-August, by, is that too far away? I don't know.
Um, just, I have to reach out. Um, just, I have to reach out to see if I can have everybody meet first and see when I can meet with everybody. And then to be able to get back to you with when we can meet and then give us two or three weeks so we can noodle it and come up with some ideas. So definitely mid-August, maybe late August. I have to, you know, before school starts.
Okay, that's fine. And again, it's summertime and I don't, you know, I don't wanna rile, rile up anybody cuz nothing is happening this year. Um, and, but it, we, you know, this is something we said we were gonna look at, so we're looking at it, and I think we need to be serious about it. So just try to fut- future planning here. So, okay, so you'll let us know, I guess, basically. And do you need anything from us right now? If, I guess if you do, just email us and let us know or whatever, so. Okay, so, m- moving on, I don't think anybody has anything. So the next steps. Um, so I talked with a couple of you over the last week. Um, I've gotten some feedback. It's been pretty productive. Um, as far as future agenda planning, um, I think what I'm, I'm just gonna say where I'm at and people, then I just wanna go around the room and get everyone's like, one minute at the mic here. Um, is, I think that when we're talking about the short-term planning, we had the people come in from the cafeteria, um, the food service, which gave us a really great presentation. We had also talked about the athletics, um, having them come in. There's been other, other scenarios um, that we've talked about, but I think what's, what's really hard is that, um, I don't think there's any, I don't think we're, again, this is my opinion, but I don't think there's gonna be any good options. I think every, if we invite people in, they know they're coming in for, it's kind of a beauty contest. Um, and they're gonna come in and every, every segment that we invite in or every division, whatever you wanna call it, is going to have a great story and they're gonna, you know, they're going to um, you know, pull at our hearts and, you know, we're all gonna be, feel terrible about even, even perhaps, y- you know, suggesting something, uh, you know, a reduction or, or a cost savings or efficiency or whatever. And I just don't see, I, I, I'm not sure if I'm feeling that having these meetings where people are coming in uh, and and kinda giving us a song and dance about, you know, about their job and everything is, is helpful. Um, and I, I'm wondering if there's a better approach to taking a look at some of, some of this, some of these numbers for the budget. Um, you know, what happens, you know, for example, and then I'll go around the room. If my dog would stop barking here, sorry. Um, the, um, you know, what, for instance, what happens if we just said at a, you know, a ten percent from, from every, every line or, or ten percent from every department or a certain percentage, I'm pulling that number out of the sky, but you know, what happens if we start looking at scenarios like that to see what that would look like? So if we went to athletics and we said, okay, we need to cut ten percent from athletics, what would that look like? And then decide from there what, what it would look like, because they're gonna come in and I feel like they're just gonna give a great presentation. So I'm just trying to see where everybody's at and see how they feel about switching the way that we're looking at the numbers. Um, so with that said, I'll just go with on my screen first and Dan, you, you happen to be the first person I'm looking at. So do you have any thoughts?
Sure, off the cuff here. Uh, so when we talk about a possible, I know you said it's just a, a number right now, a ten percent cut. Um, I wonder if we might reframe that to, um, how do we walk expenses at X level for the next three years type of thing, which probably because inflation comes out to about ten percent, but it's a little bit more gradual approach, which might allow for some more planning, um, and easing that discussion. Um, but I do agree with you, Mike, that, that presentation was awesome. I learned a lot. Uh, but if we do that with all the uh, interested parties, we're gonna spend a lot of time listening to great stories and we're gonna be spinning our wheels as far as uh, where can we find potential savings.
Okay, Lisa, I see you have your hand up. Let me just go to Steve first.
Yeah, um, I mean, I, I've, I've been on the receiving end of blanket cuts of X percent and uh, it always struck me as, it's very unfair. We're like, good performing unions, units were penalized as much as underperformers. Uh, I, I'd much rather us make decisions and, and like, my opinion is the quality of the food the kids get is uh, more important than covering all the transportation costs for away games, things like that. So, uh, I'd be more interested in going down the tab on Dan's spreadsheet on the uh, short-term savings and just, you know, opting to take the lead on uh, some of them.
Okay, Lisa.
So what I really would like to see the finance committee look at and review are the big bucket items. Doing across-the-board savings, I mean, I can do that, you know, and I have been doing that. We did a ten percent across supplies. We're gonna be doing that even more to meet the cuts. Those type of things, uh, first of all, doing across-the-board cuts, you can't do across the board. There are certain things, you know, we have utilities, we have propane, we have, there's certain things that we just can't do. We have insurance bills, we have health insurance, so you can't do across-the-board cuts. Small things looking like, you know, all those little small things, you know, that's my job to do on a daily basis. You know, I'm responsible of taking care of that. What I need the finance committee really to be looking at are these big bucket items. You know, across-the-board cuts, if it's seventy thousand or, you know, fifty thousand, that's really chump change, small potatoes, even though it adds up. I want you guys, I would love you guys to be focusing on the big decision items, meaning that, you know, cutting transportation to some away games, things like that, consolidation, en- enlarging the, the classroom sizes, closing a school, you know, doing bonds, that type of thing. I can certainly, you can certainly ask me for data and say, Lisa, where can you find more efficiencies? And, you know, cost savings, you know, you're here two years now, you've been able to dive into all the budgets. I can certainly do that for you and I have been doing that and I will continue to do cost savings. Um, but, you know, across the board, I would not recommend across the board because we need to look at, look at everything and that doesn't always work. So definitely supplies, periodicals, we can look at cost efficiencies. But what I need to be bringing to you is more large-ticket items. Um, transportation definitely. I'm meeting with Dan, I mentioned earlier, Dan Sargent in two weeks to see where we can, um, and off the bat, we are looking at possibly cutting a couple of, um, you know, busing, which I'll be able to share with you, um, in two weeks to see where we can save, you know, seventy, eighty or a hundred thousand, and that's what I'd like to be bringing to you guys. So that's, I just wanted to share across the board, blanket cuts does not work.
Yeah, and, and I just wanna clarify, I was just throwing that out. I didn't really necessarily mean it. I was just saying, are we heading in the wrong direction? So, um, thank you, uh, Bobby.
Okay, well, um, I can, um, just listen to what Lisa said and hearing what Steve said, I think it, I, I, I'm going along with Steve. Um, I, you know, I think, and, and you do need to look at these. Um, look at the list that Dan gave us and then see which of these are the bigger ticket items, the big bucket items that, that Lisa's talking about. I mean, maybe, you know, just making sure that list does address those things. Um, and if not, you know, I guess the other area I, I just put down was field trips. You know, do we be looking at that?
Yeah, um, I think Lisa, I just, and I wanna get, I see Ashley wants to talk in a second, um, but I think where a couple of the members maybe were, were, I didn't want it to make it feel like this is a present, like the, 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 the people that came in before the food service did an amazing job, they probably read between the lines and, and wanted to make sure that they, you know, uh, told us everything that went on, but I think, and I don't wanna sound cold, but I think we, we need to keep a little bit of distance as far as, because these are tough decisions we may have to make. And I think that what the concern was is just that, you know, if we invite athletics in next, they're gonna give us a, probably a really good presentation, right? Um, and so how can we make better decisions where it's not an hour-long presentation, hour-and-a-half-long presentation where we're, we're gonna be really hard for us to make these tough decisions, right? So I don't wanna sound like some, like, one of those, like McKinsey and Company, you know, um, corporate cost cutter people, but um, you, you know, there's gotta be a way that we can get information and make the information where it's not a whole, you know, be, beauty contest, and then maybe decide at that point if we're making a really big cut or we're thinking, or recommending a cut or a reduction or whatever we wanna call it, then maybe do we, you know, is that worse? Then we meet with them or, or what? You know, I think that's where, that's where we wanna make sure we're staying on track.
That's what I'd like to speak to, if I could go next.
Sorry, go ahead, Ashley. Sorry, I forgot.
Um, what I wanna say is, speaking of that, first of all, I caution you to be very sensitive to each and every group, and I think you're right. I, I, um, they people will wanna come and speak and they will be long-winded, so. The food service, that was tremendous and, and they just didn't really, we didn't give them parameters, right? You didn't say, you're gonna have fifteen minutes to give me the highlights, right?
Yeah.
So, but I would caution you to turn, to not have people come in front of you. I think that's a mistake. I think that you are sitting in a very pole position in a team but within a giant team. So if you, if you, you need to, as leader of this group, show a lot of sensitivity to each of these stakeholders, athletics, whatever it is. And honestly, Mike, I don't think it's that many different places. You know, we heard from Dwayne, we heard, we, the, I think we covered some of this in our retreat from that stakeholder group. Sports is key because that's a big deal. We definitely need to get, be presented to by HCLC to find out what their actual needs are and wants are, and we can't make assumptions about any of that. So I think that you're right in that we can't burn up whole meetings with presentations. We do not have time for that. But we do have time to hear from each group and you've gotta take it and make it part of these meetings because it won't be that many. And sensitivity is critical. I know we have hard decisions to make. I definitely don't think bringing people in after you've decided that, that, you know, we're cutting ya. That's not, that's not productive. I mean, what is productive is making sure stakeholders in this group feel heard. And if they don't, we're gonna look like shadows of the past and you do not want that.
Yeah, I, I think we wanna make sure that they're heard. I, I guess where I'm going with this is, and these are just suggestions. I'm, I'm open to anything and I've only got a few minutes left here, but is, I, I agree that if we're going to continue to have people come in and give us presentation, it's gotta be, it's gotta be a set time limit. You know, it's gotta be, um, there's gotta be parameters around that, so. Um.
Could they give you written word beforehand? Could they, could you ask for a report from sports? So that we have an outline of what their, the finance pieces they wanna, we wanna hear about? I mean, that's another way. Give them your, tell them what you wanna know. You don't need to know every coach. You don't need, we know that these are humans and, and obviously that, but maybe you could even give them more homework. I mean, everybody's on the team, so if you're giving them homework, that, they should be willing to do it and I'm sure they will.
Lisa, do you know, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm just, you know, I, I don't know if we need to bring in a lot more, you know, the only thing in the food service was, is so complicated because, you know, we wanted to be able to share um, how the food service operates. It, it's a program within the school district and, you know, we actually have to match money. We, we buy local to receive grants. And, you know, that was in particular, I wanted to be able to bring Paul and Erica to you guys so you could understand it's complicated. You know, anything else, you know, we can certainly collect data. I provided transportation data to you already. I've provided a breakdown of all the sports to you. If you have specific questions, um, you know, of, of the director of, uh, you know, athletics, Ian, I could, we could certainly email him questions. I don't necessarily know that we need to bring Ian in to go over all athletics. I mean, I provided data to you, but I think a lot of things are just specific. What data are you looking for? And I can gather that data and give that to you.
So, so a specific, so a scenario might, might be, so we look at that athletic, that, the athletic data that you gave us. But I guess if someone was looking at that and saying, well, gee, you know, is this, is this too much, right? Are we spending too much in athletics, right? Where would somebody look to decide if we're spending too much in athletics? And if so, where are we going to re- reduce the cost of athletics? How are we making a decision if that was something we wanted to make it on? And so that's where I think, where, where the scenario of, well, fine, just tell them to come and be prepared to talk about reducing their budget by ten percent, right? Now, that's, that's a joke. I don't mean that seriously, but I just mean, what, how are we, how are we looking at these? How, how are we looking at the budget so we can ask informed questions if he's coming in or ask informed questions of you?
Okay, well, first of all, he really wouldn't know the, the financial data.
I'm just giving a sample, right?
So I would, I would be the one providing that data to you. So what, you know, a good question would be is how are we compared to other school districts? You know, how much of their operation are they spending on athletics? And what I could do is go out and be able to do an analysis of other school districts to see how much of their operating funds are going to support athletics. I don't know. I can't tell you right now, but I can certainly find out information, um, and, and be able to pull that. So those are the types of, you know, information that I need to know what you're looking for and I can go out and provide that data then.
Hmm.
Okay, um, I don't wanna keep anybody longer. It's six o'clock. Um, right now, how does everyone feel about having another meeting sooner than later? How does everyone feel about that?
I think we should.
Okay, and we wanna, the topic would be the short-term, the short-term goals, correct? So it would be continuous of this. Okay. Um, Lisa, you're on vacation, right, next week?
I'm on vacation this week.
What? What are you doing here? I thought you were gonna do. Alright, okay, um, let's, so next Monday, uh, same time at four thirty?
Okay, let me, let me just bring up an issue.
Go ahead.
I told Jonathan last night and I said, you know, our, originally, when we talked about it, we were gonna meet on the same timeframe as the board meetings. And that, we've kinda gone to Mondays, which he wasn't anticipating. He did say that, uh, usually after work is better for him. He, again, he said to our whole group, he can't make, he doesn't know, his summer schedule may change. But we, you know, so we originally were kind of gonna go with Wednesdays.
Right, I forgot about that, yeah.
Yeah, so I just wanted to throw that out there.
No, no, that's a good, that's, that's a good point. Um, is Wednesday still a good time for everybody?
Yeah. Uh, not at six, though. Not, it's not good for.
No, 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 we were gonna go before the regular meeting. I think it, Bobby, do you remember what time we'd originally decided? We got off track for a couple of weeks. Was it four or four-thirty on Wednesdays?
Well, we said, uh, four, so we could end at five-thirty so people could get to board meetings, but it could be thirty. I don't know that that's gonna be any better for Jonathan because he's still, you know, it's his workday and.
So, yeah, okay, so do we wanna do, well, let's just stick with the original plan. So four o'clock, is that good for everybody on Wednesday, next Wednesday?
Yep, yep.
Um, hang on one second. Next Wednesday is July tenth. Okay, so next Wednesday, July tenth at four o'clock on Zoom. And everybody's good with that. And our agenda item will really be continuous discussion of the short-term goals. Um, and maybe in the meantime, Lisa and I can just connect and we'll just kinda fine-tune exactly um, how that would look and, and then get her to give us her opinion on where we should go next. Is that sound okay to you, Lisa?
Yeah.
Okay, alright, anything else before we go? Okay, is there, it's a beautiful night. Let's, it's gonna be great, I think, so, um, alright.
Mike, we'll be quick. You actually were scheduled to six fifteen in this meeting, four forty-five to six fifteen.
Thank you for that important information.
Yeah, we were.
Only one rule follower in every, every, uh, group. Uh, I think we can probably end it here, but I just will say, Lisa, thanks for coming in again and all your hard work. You really, um, could go, go beyond what I was expecting and you're on vacation. You shouldn't be here, seriously. Um, so, um, go like have a drink or something, I don't know, but, um, um, so, uh, yeah, and we'll get this thing figured out. I think, I think just back just real quick, just about the thing. It was just too mu- I think every, every group is gonna probably have some really important information and, and, and Ashley's right, we do wanna hear from everybody. It's just, I think we just need to kinda fine-tune it a little bit. Um, so thank you for your, thank you for your input.
Yeah, and I, I guess I would just add, you know, I think we all have to be patient with this process. I think it's great if we, the short-term, great, we need to look at that, but we did tell people we were gonna study this thing. And I, I think that we haven't lost anything by coming up with scenarios because we at least. And I, I think that we haven't lost anything by coming up with scenarios because we at least discovered one area of commonality so far. And and there may be other things, you know, that that will emerge out of just going, you know, taking a look at that. So whatever we're doing, I think is for the best and um we'll get there.
Yeah. And I, and I have noticed a couple of other school districts in the news have recently formed finance committees. And um, so I think it's definitely something that people are having to really, you know, focus on, given the, who knows what's gonna happen next year with the budget. So um, so anyway, we'll go from there. Um, but again, thanks everyone for coming tonight. Now we had two meetings, so um, we'll see you, see everybody next week, right? All right. Oh, is there a motion to adjourn? Sorry.
Move to adjourn.
Eve, is there a second? Any discussion? I'm assuming no. Uh, all, all in favor? Yay, that's right. All right, everyone. Have a, have a.
Bye, everybody.
Thanks, everybody. Thank you.
Yeah, bye.
Bye, guys. Bye, guys.